The city council, to the right of order, Tuesday, February 11th, seven o'clock PM. English, start with the pledge of allegiance. Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Here.
Hi, President.
A motion to approve the city council minutes from January 28, 2025, regular city council meeting is their motion. All the role movies, second round of the rootenberg, not the question. Here. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
That's how it is, right? Well.
Thank you. We have a couple swearing ins tonight, I'd like to do that at the beginning of the meeting. Do you be ready, Desmond?
Hi, Simone McRae.
Hi, Simone McRae.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of police officer.
To the office of police officer.
In the city of Illinois.
In the city of Illinois.
In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution for the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
That we will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
That's your ability.
That's my ability.
Congratulations.
Hi.
My role here is a visit.
My role here is a visit.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
The office.
To the office.
Of the office.
To the office.
The city of Illinois.
The city of Illinois.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution for the state of Illinois.
The Constitution for the state of Illinois.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
The office of police officer.
The office of police officer.
That's your ability.
That's my ability.
In case you guys don't want to be sitting around for the meeting, free to go and then we'll resume the regular meeting in a couple minutes.
All right. Continuing the regular meeting, moving on to public comment. As a reminder, the public comment period is not a time for dialogue. The purpose of the public comment period is for the mayor and Alderman to cities to receive input from their community. It is in fact a one way to indication of the city council. The city's administration and department heads are available for discussions after the meeting. For any public comments? Any public comments? Not moving on. We've been asked for a presentation by Veterans Services LLC with a request and extension for submission, approval, or final plan development plan. Guys here, you guys ready?
Yes, sir.
I would feel free to come on up.
Hello, my name is Nick Standford, attorney Shane Banks for the development. So, well, I think the last time I was here was maybe in the spring or the summertime. I was here regularly through 2024 and think even in 2023, I'm working on this. So it's, it's good to be back in Blue Island. And I, I want to provide an update. Obviously, nothing's been built, no plans have been submitted. And, and we acknowledge that. But I did want to give you an update on kind of what has happened, where we're at, where we, where we think we can go with this. So. On January 23rd, the city council approved an ordinance approving the proposed preliminary plan development for the former Metro South Hospital site. Since that time, Veterans has maintained the property and attempted to obtain funding to complete those plans to prepare to have the drawings prepared for the final plan development. And we've also worked on removing encumbrances on the property. If you look at title, there's a lot of different lien holders, people who claim they haven't been paid, things like that. So what we've been endeavoring to do is spend about a million dollars trying to get rid of some of those encumbrances. What was it claiming in anchor, premium, secure one, because I think, I believe those have all been paid. And for certain one had. So. The, if there's any indication of what the direction for this development is, it's to move forward. They wouldn't pay about a million bucks to settle these claims if it wasn't for that, if they didn't have a plan for this property. But the, the problem has been the, the use, the medical office uses that were envisioned, that the interest has been very soft. And we haven't had the, the interest that we think that the, the lender would feel comfortable lending the money to support this development at the time. So I do want to read you the letter from the lender here. It says, I understand that the city of Blue Island seeks an update from Builders Capital regarding the status of funding of the planned development of the former Metro South Hospital site. Builders did not approve Veterans' request for funding in 2024 due to lack of market interest in the medical uses of the planned development. Veterans is advised that it is seeking additional uses to make the planned development more attractive from a market standpoint. Once Veteran identifies those uses and amends the planned development to allow for them, it will submit a request for funding to Builders and a funding decision will be made within, will likely be made within 30 days thereafter. On approval of the funding, Veterans will provide a budget and it will be reviewed by Builders and then draws will be made based on approved items within the budget. So that's from Kurt Alteg at Builders Capital. And we provided that just to kind of bolster our, our position. We wanted to make sure that Sydney knew that this was what was happening kind of behind the scenes. This is why the, the big plan development with the pretty pictures and everything we showed hasn't yet come to fruition. So with respect to those other potential uses, we're trying to, we, we've got some interest from different some data, data companies, data centers, there's, there needs to be studies to see if there's enough power for those. We haven't, we don't have any concept plans or anything like that for those uses. Those would all come back to the planning commission and back to the board for approval. We recognize that. But the reason I mentioned this is because we're looking for ways to fund this. And if something like that can happen where we can get a zoning approval and then maybe a building on the, on one of these parking lots and do some ground up construction, it brings in a lot of cash and that allows you to do the plans, that allows you to execute on these, on the, the commercial and the senior housing uses that we're proposing. So we think that's, that's, that's not, obviously, that's not a, a fully baked or even a half baked plan yet. But I just wanted to say that that is in the works right now. We're, we're talking to different people and hopefully that type of thing, I can come back to you and say, here's our idea and you can evaluate that. So you, you're probably asking, okay, do you have all these other potential uses for the site? Why do you want to extend what's there? And the answer to that is because the senior housing components that, that's there, that zoning approval is very valuable and we want to keep that. And what we're, and, and these medical uses, if the market changes, we'd like to keep those too. So we could have asked for a year extension of our plan development. What we're asking for is six months until July 22nd, 2025. So we've been working with the city cooperatively in that time to, we, we only had one complaint over the summer, one citation for grass and weeds, but we paid that ticket. We've had a landscaper on the site year round. We tried to maintain the wind screens there. We, we've been working with the fire department to try to bring some water into the stand pipes that will resume in the spring and that helps the building stay safe in the event of a fire. So the property owner has been a decent steward of this property. There hasn't been any major events. We hired security services to monitor the property, make sure the neighbors feel not threatened by any break-ins or things like that. So, so care has been taken for this site. And we would, we would ask for this extension of the planned development to July 22nd, 2025. We have Charles Eberhart on the line. He's the principal for Veterans. I wanted him to be here. I'm not sure if the Zoom is available here, but if it is, Charles, can you, can you hear us? Oh, it's not, I've got it in. Okay, all right, well, um, so I did that Charles Eberhart, we, we had him on the line and if there are any questions, I can, you can ask him and I can have Dan talk to him or we can text with him and answer those questions if I can answer them. But we want to make sure Charles was here to, to be the voice in case you had any questions for him. So we've been working also cooperatively with the city on the, the park. There's a license to the, the former Metro South Park there. And the city can use that for all of its events, things like that. I get the newsletter updates on my phone every, is it every week or is it every month with nice events happening in the park? And we, we want to continue that, whether it's, we want to continue to, if the city wants another term of that license agreement, which extends the end of April this year, we're happy to extend that for another, I think it's a year and a half or so term or longer if the city requires, but we think it's been a good relationship with the city. We care about making sure that it's not a blight on the, the area. It's obviously a really big, big building in the heart of downtown. So that's our presentation. Dan, I don't know if there's anything else you, you would want to say?
Do you have any questions, Lushman?
Yeah, do you have any questions? Go ahead, Alderman Roll.
Yeah, just, I guess so I'm clear. What would you be specifically seeking to achieve in this six month period?
So this is where we're hoping to get those proposals for whether it's a data center or any other uses. We, I'm not going to guarantee we're going to get it in six months, but we did want to ask for a year. We felt like that would be too long of a lead time for the board. I mean, if, if we don't get it done by July 22nd, I would be right back here asking for probably another six month extension explaining what's changed in the time.
So you're essentially, if I understand, aging infer for how the space could be used all as a prerequisite to seeking funding from your preferred bank to see if they agree.
Correct.
Thank you. For my part, I think before I could vote one way or the other, I'd like a, a written report, is that possible, on the things you've just summarized?
Yes.
Particular, the steps taken to remove the encumbrances. And if I could understand to, if you're willing to include a copy of the specific things that Builders Capital is seeking to have amended in the original proposal.
Okay.
And then lastly, yeah, if you could just again sort of summarize, I think, what plans if you are at least looking to put out there to gauge that interest, whether it's the data centers or people around. Okay, good to hear that.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Wow, great. I'd like to agree also with Alderman Roll's request. I appreciate you've spent significant ones over there. I will have to say that the veterans may think that the building's been maintained in acceptable condition, but it's been maybe a cheerleading condition and appearance for the past five years, such a safe building. It's frankly a high source of town. I think that is not entirely your fault, I've heard it since. My, my way of saying this, I'd like to just let you know that if we're going to vote on something, I think before we would, I would want to see an improvement, particularly the fencing. I think at this point, we need a durable and attractive fence that would look good for the duration of how long this is going to be that we're looking at this thing. And you say you've been wait a sleeping. It's good that want to make sure that we don't hit over to other vegetation, probably can't see it. Because that's place for rats and other things that are terrible to bugs themselves, so. That, that's kind of what I've been looking at right now.
Yes, sir.
Alderman, do you, do you know what, what percentage of, of the, of your overall plan that, that they are looking at changing?
So, yeah, so the, it's hard to say, but the building's condo wise, so there's a medical office condo and then there's a senior housing condo. From my, from what I understand, the senior housing condo, that's still a great use. Senior housing is, is, is a great, is a, with a lot of market demand for that. It's the medical component, so it's the office space, it's like the surgery center, things like that. And we're, we're having a hard time filling. And that's a, a big part of the, kind of the, what is it, the basement and the first and second floors. The, so it's hard to put a percentage on it. I mean, basically, if you look at it, the building, the towers are, that's all the senior housing. And then even down on some of the lower floors, there's like a limited, limited use hotel for any of the guests who are staying there, but that's not a big percentage. So would you say that the medical's about 60% of the bill? There's also a grocery that was proposed.
Right.
So would you say about the medical, about 40% of the building?
Forty percent, maybe, not even.
You know, we, we also had, I mean, previously had interest from like film companies, things like that. I'm not sure if, if our brokers have turned down, you know, turned over all those leads. So that kind of thing, you know, it's, it's a hospital, it's an old hospital and it actually doesn't look too bad in that medical space down there. And if, if there was an interested film office that wanted to do a medical scene, that'd be a perfect place for it. Obviously, we have to come back, we have to make sure that that use could be, could fit into our plan and we'd have to get approval for it.
Very good.
So it says attempting to find other potential uses to obtain the required funding. What? That this may, uh, maybe, uh, all the roll discussion, what? You know, so that, what is that?
The idea right now is a data center. And the data center would be, would be ground up new construction, maybe in one of the parking lots. So we'd have to make sure that, you know, the parking spaces we take up, we have to run the new parking number, see if we have sufficient parking for other uses. But that, that's the idea being explored right now. That's outside the building.
I have a couple of big events on Alden Fairwall's concerns. You mentioned all the tars, about 50% have blown away. And behind that fencing, there is no maintenance of any vegetation. You can't even drive down the entrance privately anymore. It's full of trees and weeds. There'll often be cut back. And the tarps got to be restored for a different type of fence, so hide all that, have to go on. So I, I drove around the entire structure before meeting. There's some graffiti on the lower levels. But yes, 50% of those tars and torn.
Yeah, so if there's a, if there's a condition of the extension, of the approval of the extension, and that's part of it, I think that could be one way to, to do it. Or if you want me to try to get it done before I come back, I can try to do that. I can't promise that because the way it's been going is we've been asking for approved budget draws and we've been trying to get those that way. If I can get one quickly, we can probably do the work and get the stuff cut, cut down for, not before, before meeting in two weeks, but potentially in a month or so.
I don't see us voting on anything tonight. I'm ready to discuss it in executive session. Okay, so we possibly move on to some other condition.
Okay, just so I'm here, I, I would not vote in favor until those things are accomplished.
Understood.
Okay.
Alden Roll and Alderman.
You know, in regard to these assessments of various markets for interests, would you be willing to share the feedback that you're getting? So for example, whether it's a data center for medical offices, there'd be certain considerations that those operators would have, right? So data center needs cooling, they need a certain amount of power capacity. If you share those things with the city, I would think that would be key for at least paving the way for the viability of it, right? It's, you can't just slap a data center in a parking lot. So if there's specific feedback that you are getting, that would make that more attractive, that you can share with ops, that would be helpful. Again, whether it's, you know, inducements for medical offices, infrastructure need, whatever it is you're getting back, it'd be good for us to.
So I'm much, the data center, I think issue came up because there's a lot of electricity that goes to the site.
There's quite a bit of power and fiber there without getting into the details on it.
And that, and that's, if you hear more, right, like, oh, that's great, but we would need a certain water capacity for cooling. You could share that with us, right? It would just help expedite the process, right?
Right.
And you want to discuss the medical, the reimbursements, things like that?
Yeah, I mean.
Kind of the issues we're seeing.
Medical users, the issue there, I mean, that's why kind of the hospital has to do with the cat from the area and the reimbursement. The type of insurance or whatever, that's why Quorum, you know, pulled out or whatever. So that kind of affects some of the users that were, you know, were trying to get across the rates that they were willing to pay or, you know, below what our, our lender, you know, is happy with. So we're pushing on that. There's still, you know, paying interest. On the data center, we can get you a lot of information on that of what that, I mean, it's like the hot topic everywhere, but it would be just a small portion, but it is very, you know, profitable and it's because of the proximity of the substations and the fiber that runs along. That's actually, it's, it makes it very interesting.
Yeah, exactly.
But I mean, it's kind of early on, I don't want to.
Exactly, if you are getting specific interest, that's why it's helpful for us to know because we might be able to make that the difference between us and the town next door, if it's serious interest.
Yeah, it is, you know. I can get into the details on that. It's, a lot of towns are, you know, they like that. I mean, it's, it's good tax dollars, good jobs, good, you know, good new construction, whatever, but you know, we can get into that, provide why they think this is a great site. Okay, so you're, because of financing, you're, you're looking at, are, are you completely not, not reaching out to any other family that was supposed to be an urgent care and then a pharmacy? And both those kinds of things, are those still within, or just beneath the pharmacy for sure?
Urgent, maybe, yeah, urgent care, mainly Sarah Care.
Eric, we do have Sarah Care online, urgent care.
Explain what Sarah Care is.
Uh, Sarah Care is for adult, it's adult daycare, drop off. A parent or parents, they're from eight to four, something for them to do. While, you know, the, the children are, you know, at work. That we have in place. The urgent care is a little bit more difficult. I mean, we weren't hoping to get higher rentals. You see the different urgent cares around town. I mean, it's, it's become very competitive. And the square footage they take is, is, you know, compared to what we have to offer. You know, they, they like a retail inline calf space, usually 4,000 square feet max, maybe 8,000 square feet. We're, you know, we've got about 140,000 square feet in our medical condo part. But. Pharmacy portion. But that would be kind of a lost leader. I mean, we're going to really, you know, have a, a lower rent to have that if we, you know, we go through with that. And the pharmacy.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's going to be a function of the urgent care. They got to step forward first.
Frederick.
So the doctors that came, I think, what, last year, possibly?
Yeah.
Are they, are they still involved and are they tied into the urgent care and where is that?
They, they are, yeah. I mean, but, you know, they're, they've got other centers, they kind of know the economics, they know the insurance mix and what have you. It's just, you know, it's a function of what the rent that we would receive. So. You know, it's a little bit circular, but you know, if we are successful with the data center, it, it solves a lot of issues. I mean, it brings a lot of income and, and that helps with the senior living component as well.
The building.
Yeah. And then, uh, Alder and Fairwall, you know, as far as landscaping, we have a landscaping group that, you know, it's obviously winter time. We've got a scope for putting new blue. We've got a scope for putting new blue tarps all around. But we've done all the landscaping outside the property. There's a, you know, a massive landscaping that needs to be done inside, there's a lot of overgrown, which you can see through there now.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are no animals, I can attest to that, no rats or raccoons or anything like that.
But they could, they could show up, maybe, the way it is.
They could, there's nothing for them to feed on, but we've been real good about putting out, making sure that there's nothing. And, yeah, anyways. Mayor Alderman? Not, you guys, unless you're pressed for time, I'd like you to stick around, we're going to win executive after, we only have like three moments left of the meeting. And in case the Alderman have additional questions, he'll be here.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to. Motion for approval of payroll dated January thirty first, committee five. Amounts of twenty eight, four ninety two and ninety three cents of your motion. Open person involved in. Fair and well on the questions. Or please do the roll call.
Mayor Wal.
Hi.
Hold up a key.
Hi.
Hold up a car.
Hi.
Hold on roll.
Hi.
Hold on to a toy.
Hi.
Hold on to the bird.
Hi.
Question carries from the B. Motion for approval of house table dated February twelfth. Amount of four eighty one, one hundred and thirty nine cents of your motion. Which involves a ball on toy on the question. Or if we do the roll call.
Hold on farewell.
Hi.
Hold on the heat.
Hi.
Hold on the car.
Hi.
Hold on the roll.
Hi.
Hold on my toy.
Hi.
Hold on to the bird.
Hi.
Cares. Through a proclamation to declare March twelve, twenty twenty five Intellectual and Disability Awareness Day in Blue Island, Illinois. Whereas Intellectual and Developmental Disability Awareness Month reminds the public to bring awareness, educate, and respect people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And whereas, effective way to increase awareness by participating in community activities. People with disabilities, acknowledging every individual's contribution to our community. And whereas, people are encouraged to shift their thinking when trying to fix a disability, instead focus on supporting individuals with intellectual, developmental disabilities. And whereas, rather than telling individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities what they should do. We should ask them what they would like to do for their community and look for ways to support their efforts. And whereas, if we treat everyone with dignity and respect and kindness, we will continue to spread awareness, educate, and respect throughout our communities, schools, and workplaces. So that all people are embraced. And whereas, each one of us can honor our diversity and contribute to continuing to make Blue Island a great place to live. Therefore, I, Mayor Fred Lato, Mayor of the City of Blue Island, Illinois, do hereby proclaim March twelve, twenty twenty five. It's Intellectual and Developmental Disability Awareness Day, encourage all citizens to work together to promote and increase awareness and understanding of people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And we picked the day because I believe they're doing a tour that day like they do annually. With all our departments and all the departmental reawareness, that's why we picked that date. So I'd like to add minutes to our motion. Much rather Lutherburg, second round of roll, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um. I'm gonna skip the mayor's comments, because I only have one executive for right now. I'll give it to the being Thursday, my city clerk, do you have it? Yeah, okay. City clerk.
Hello, everybody, I need a motion to approve January thirty first, twenty four, the body of the report, please.
Much rather all, second round of car. A question. Or please do the roll call.
Hold on farewell.
Hi.
Hold on the heat.
Hi.
Hold on the car.
Hi.
Hold on roll.
Hi.
Hold on my toy.
Hi.
Hold on to the bird.
Hi.
Succession.
Cares. Like I said, we're going to brief the executive, city administration, do you have anything? All right, good, you need a motion to go into executive session. Much rather farewell, second round of roll, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.